Thank you, Council President and members of the council. As Council President Bass said, I'm Assistant City Administrator Betsy Lake, and I'm excited to introduce part two of today's orientation, where we get to talk about our public infrastructure. And in terms of our city administrative structure, the following presentations are from some of the departments and divisions that report through to me. And that includes Oakland Public Works, Oakland Department of Transportation, and our Oak 311 Service Division. So with that brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Harold Duffy, our Director of Oakland Public Works.
Thank you, Ms. Lake. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, Public Works Director. And President Bass, just for a bit of housekeeping rules. For the information on this report is actually found in the, on page sixty-six of the department briefing document on page twenty-two-three. And also, President Bass, one quick question I have for you, because I'm covering a lot of material and different subject matters. I wanted to know if you want me to go all the way through, and then you'll ask questions, or do you want me to stop at each bureau for an opportunity to ask questions on those sections?
What has worked mostly is going through the entire section and asking questions. And so I'll ask my colleagues to make sure that you are noting down your questions or comments, so that when we get to that section, we can get through them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next slide, please. So we're going to talk about the mission. Oakland Public Works is dedicated to you. We strive to maintain, improve, and preserve Oakland's infrastructure and environment for the residents, businesses, visitors, and future generations of every neighborhood in our diverse city. And I want to highlight that point is, in every neighborhood in our diverse city. Our vision statement. We envision an Oakland that provides and supports living and working conditions that are healthy, safe, and clean, easy and equitable access to services, transparent, accountable, and efficient use of public resources, responsible, sustainable stewards of our environment. And I just wanted to say too, is Public Works really provides a number of stealth services. And one of the things that we always say is Public Works is everywhere. Next slide, please. So our organizational structure is, I'm the director. There are six hundred and sixty-four full-time equivalent employees. We have four bureaus. One is headed by Tom Morgan. He's our Administrative Services Manager for the Bureau of Administration. Sue Chin Yohann, she's the Assistant Director of Bureau of Design and Construction. And we have Richard Battersby. He is in charge of Bureau of Maintenance and Internal Services. And then Kristen Hathaway, she is the Assistant Director of the Bureau of the Environment. Public Works Organization, once again, is six hundred and sixty-four full-time equivalent positions. We have five hundred and forty-three of those filled, about eighteen percent vacancy rate. I said before, there's four bureaus, three led by Assistant Directors, and that would be Building Design Construction, Bureau of the Environment, and Bureau of Maintenance and Internal Services. And then we have one bureau, but administration led by administrative manager. The Assistant Directors oversee division managers, who in turn oversee program supervisors. We plan, build, and maintain Oakland's physical environmental infrastructure for residents and businesses and visitors, making Oakland a sustainable and desirable place to live, work, and invest. Next slide, please. This is a quick snapshot of the infrastructure of the assets that we have. And so we have about fifty-five thousand, kind of updated this list, official street trees, eleven thousand five hundred storm drain structures, one thousand eighty-five vehicles and pieces of equipment, including fire trucks and police cars, one thousand one hundred miles of city streets cleaned annually, nine hundred and thirty-four miles of sewer pipes, four hundred miles of storm drains, pipes, three hundred and nine public buildings that we maintain, two hundred installed and four hundred planned trash capture devices with storm drains, one hundred and forty city parks, hundred-plus street medians, eighty-plus miles of open creek, twelve storm drain pump stations, eleven sewer pump stations, and all open space and park trees we maintain. Next slide. So the Bureau of Environment Administration provides fiscal services, human resources, business information, and analytics. And that's done by forty-one full-time employees. And so this information can be found also on page seventy-four and seventy-five of the document I referenced earlier. And so the Public Works Department. Next slide, please. The Public Works Department actually has a total of two hundred and twenty-one million dollars is our budget, managed by twenty-one different funding sources. And the Fiscal Services and Human Resources Deliverables, we develop and department conflicts by annual budgets and mid-cycle amendments. As I mentioned earlier, twenty-one different funding lines. Monitor hundreds of contract purchases, purchase orders, support departments' efforts to stay fully staffed, handle the department's labor relations issues, payroll entries and transactions, performance management process, and safety training programs, and conducts more than forty-four thousand hours of training each year for our employees. Excellent. The Business Information and Analytics Division. They implement and use the technology tools for businesses and data analysis, reporting and communications. We use items like CityWorks, C Click Fix, Fleet Focus, Network Fleet, Accella, Granite GXP, and Microsoft Power BI. These are really very important tools that we use in order to not only quantify what we do, we can go back and look at the data to see how well we did it and where we're providing that service. And it certainly will help us when we're trying to make decisions based on data. That's very important. Tools quantify the work we do and identify challenges may need additional attention or resources. And it's always an evolving situation. We look at this data, we try to find the latest tools that we can use to really understand how we're actually delivering our service. Next slide. The next division is Bureau of the Environment, often known as BOE. Keeps Oakland clean and beautiful, that's KLCB. Environmental services are provided, park grounds and median maintenance, tree management and maintenance. This is done by two hundred and forty-five full-time equivalent employees budget. Next slide, please. This is the quick snapshot of some of the things that we actually do. Next slide, please. So KLCB maintains and enhances the cleanliness, health, and appearance of the city streets and neighborhoods. Responds to over thirty-one thousand annual requests for removal of illegal dumping. We clean over twelve hundred homeless encampments annually. We abate over five hundred thousand square feet of graffiti. We abate over seven point five million square feet of vegetation. Provide support to volunteer cleanup and beautification events, special events, and conduct street sweeping at six hundred and fourteen routes monthly. I do want to stop here and just say, for example, response to over thirty-one hundred annual requests for removal of illegal dumping. We are continuously trying to find ways to improve our services. We not only respond to work orders, but we also have a proactive measure where we go out and we try to collect the material before it has to be reported by the residents. Next slide, please. Environmental Services maintains environmental compliance in the city facilities, manages franchise contracts with Waste Management California Waste Solutions, and promotes recycling, compost, and waste reduction citywide. Supports the efforts of the community volunteers also. And in addition to note, I want to note that the Waste Management Contract is, has about seven years left, has value over a billion dollars, and it's the largest contract that we have in the city of Oakland. Next slide. Parks and Grounds Maintenance provides landscape maintenance, litter removal, and homeless encampment abatement for over a hundred and thirty-four parks and public spaces, including two regional service parks, nine community parks, fifty-three neighborhood parks, fifteen special use parks, twenty-six athletic fields, plus many, many parks, linear parks, and public grounds. Over one thousand fifty-five acres of resource conservation areas of open space and one thousand one hundred landscape meetings and the streetscapes throughout the city. Our Tree Management and Maintenance Division maintains over fifty-five thousand street trees, twelve thousand trees in public parks, median streetscapes, and a quarter of a billion trees in open spaces, in open space areas. They process over three hundred tree permits annually under the city's Protected Tree Ordinance. They also have a number of number-one priority services. Fallen trees or branches that pose an immediate hazard. That's really the primary purpose of what we're doing in terms of removal of trees. When a work order comes in, and if it's a priority order where a tree is fallen, could be obstructing, and in the road, or creates a potential hazard to citizens, that is our number-one priority in terms of we go out and we try to collect and try to take care of that work order out in the field. The Tree Inventory and Urban Forest Master Plan. This is coming forward to the council, hopefully in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. Currently, we have gone through and hired a consultant, and we have been able to map and GPS every tree that's in the public right-of-way. And we're also working on an urban forest master plan to come back to the council to show you what the true value is of an urban forest landscape, and also what maintenance we should probably do on a regular basis throughout, a cycle of maintenance throughout a number of years. Next slide. The Bureau of Maintenance Internal Services. I want to stop here, because I talked very quickly about the other units. And I want to just emphasize, the Bureau of Maintenance Internal Services really is provide service for the most critical infrastructure for the city. Whether it's the assets that we sit in and conduct our meetings in, or the assets that our public safety and our employees use to get from one location to the next to provide the critical services for the various different departments. Next slide. The Bureau of Maintenance Internal Services requires building and facility maintenance and maintenance of all of the city's building assets. The fleet and equipment management and maintenance of all of the city's vehicle assets. And the sanitary sewer and storm drain maintenance provides maintenance of all of our infrastructure in terms of sanitary sewer and storm drain flows throughout the city. This bureau is covered with two hundred and ninety-four full-time equivalent employees. Next slide. Provides full-spectrum facility support, custodial services, security, preventive and general maintenance, and repairs, modifications to over three hundred city-owned buildings. And we can really understand the tasks that our employees went through during the last pandemic, where they were really called on to try to make sure that public spaces remain sanitized. These employees in this unit worked full-time during the pandemic, and often were in the front lines in terms of fighting and sanitizing areas throughout the city. It leads in managing city effort for the pandemic and funding from two previous capital improvement projects, where we had something called minor CIPs, and then we had emergency CIPs. We combined that now to be renamed as Deferred Maintenance Fund, where we're actually going through and addressing those issues to help maintain our facilities within the city. Next slide. This is the fleet and equipment management and maintenance. As I said earlier, over eighteen hundred and seventy-five vehicles and major pieces of equipment, including police and fire. We also have the Green Fleet Policy, where we're moving forward. Have forty-four percent of our city Oakland's fleet is powered by alternative fuels, reducing our greenhouse gas emission by more than three thousand metric tons. We also have fourteen thousand individual repair and maintenance requests annually. Features in government, we were featured in government fleet magazine and recognized as one of the top fifty fleets in the nation in twenty twenty. I just want to go back, can we go back one slide? I just want to talk about the importance of our fleet management shop. Some of the challenges that we have, as I mentioned earlier, we have eighteen percent vacancy rate throughout our department. But in this particular area, for our heavy mechanics, we have a significant vacancy rate in this area. And one of the things I think is very important to understand is not only are we competing for heavy mechanics and regular mechanics with other organizations, with other public agencies, we're also competing with the private sector. And so currently, when we have people come and interview for jobs, they can go to the private sector for a heavy mechanic, get an interview, and literally start within a week and a half. We have to find a way to be able to increase our ability to bring people on board. If we're lucky, we're talking about a hundred and twenty days. If everything lines up correctly, we're talking about potentially getting a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty days, we might get someone to come on board. And I just remind the council, and I remind our staff, we're trying to find ways to make sure that we can get these critical positions hired, because if we can't repair the equipment, we can't have it available to the police and the fire department and the sewer department and other groups that need the equipment. And one of the other components of this is how we look at our overall fleet maintenance. There's two ways to do this, right? One way is to maintain our equipment. The other way is to have a robust equipment maintenance replacement schedule. And so my department comes up with the total assets that we have and industry standards on a replacement cycle. So a fire address, you know, might have a ten-year cycle, and something might have a five-year or eight-year cycle. So we do our analysis, and we propose to have a replacement fund to be able to cover that. And we have not been able to reach that. And what happens is, when you can't exchange your equipment out, you end up maintaining assets longer than their normal life, and they spend more time in the shop, and therefore we have more equipment that's not in service, and thereby increasing our overall maintenance costs by trying to get them in service. So we really have to have a comprehensive look at what this looks like, because while it may seem that it costs more to have a robust schedule, it's safer and it's also better, because you have more equipment available versus having older equipment that is continuously in the shop. Next slide, please. Go back one slide, please. There we go. Sewer, sanitary sewer and storm drain maintenance. So the sanitary sewer and storm drain maintenance would perform spill prevention and sewer pipe rehabilitation, respond to sewer overflow and spills to close and repair. We have nine hundred and thirty-four miles of pipe, eleven pump stations, twenty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-four maintenance holes and structures, thirty-five million gallons daily as goes through our pipes. Much of this system is fifty years old, and we are complying with a twenty-two-year consent decree. Now, that's a federal consent decree that basically says there are certain things that the city needs to do to make sure that a sewer maintenance system is functioning at the level that it should be. We recently had a check-in, one of three check-ins, and I'm happy to say that we have met those EPA standards. And so we are moving forward in an appropriate manner in terms of complying with the EPA consent decree. Next slide, please. This is the Bureau of Design and Construction. So this bureau really is, while the maintenance shop really takes care of all of our existing facilities, this Bureau of Design and Construction, we work with our client departments throughout the city to ensure that we can build that new facility to meet the needs of the community. So we have project and grant management, construction management, capital contracts, wastewater engineering management, watershed and stormwater management. We have seventy-three full-time employees in this particular bureau. Next slide. The project and grant management. So we lead the capital improvement program process and coordinate with thirteen client departments, all city departments except for DOT. We deliver buildings and park projects approved by the city council in the CIP process and during the budget process. The capital infrastructure budget is about three hundred and sixteen million, about fifty projects that are currently in process. The recent passage of Measure U allows the completion of projects shovel-ready that were in design and under design and construction when we under Measure KK. So that's very important to us. And one of the things that we did with Measure KK, we really looked at all of our projects that were in design or ready for construction. And then we worked with finance to say, we need X number of dollars to be able to make sure that we can take these projects from design to construction if Measure U passed. And then, thank goodness, it did. Capital assets include city buildings, facilities, parks, sanitary stormwater technology. So that's every city asset in the city. That is every library, every building, city hall, facility, community center. This capital projects is actively involved, working with the clients to try to deliver the facilities. And one of the things that we're noting, one of the things that I'm making sure that I'm working with staff on is really trying to make sure that we can stay on task in terms of delivery and budget in these projects. Next slide. We have construction management. It manages the construction of all city major capital improvement projects, including buildings, facilities. So this is the unit that goes out and do the inspections to make sure that the construction is appropriate and being done in a timely manner. We have thirty projects totaling about forty-seven million dollars were completed in the past twelve months. We manage the construction of thirty-four active capital projects currently, which valued approximately a hundred and ten million dollars. Next slide. Capital contracts. We administer the execution, the solicitation of a variety of capital improvement projects, construction, consultants, and on-call. We also administer the development and solicitation of RFPs and RFQs and bidding. And we do that for not only Public Works, we also do that for DOT in terms of administration of the contracts. Facilitates pre-bid proposal meetings, develops summary of bid proposals, contract amendments, filing notices of completion, and contract outreach support. And one of the projects that we're really sort of focusing in on now is trying to make sure that we can make sure these contracts are reaching the city's overall goal to reach out to small minority businesses and making sure there's a pathway to ensure that they have access to knowing that these contracts are out there, and also looking at ways to ensure that the contracts aren't so large that smaller contractors can't bid on those particular projects. Next slide. Wastewater Engineering Management rehabilitates an average of thirteen miles of pipeline per year in Oakland's sanitary sewer. Now, this work is really driven by the items that were identified in the consent decree that said, in order for you to move forward, you need to construct thirteen miles of pipe every year in the city. So we constantly track that to make sure that we're in compliance here. We renovate seven sewer pumps, we rehabilitated ninety-five sewer latals in the city, and we do root foaming. Root foaming is making sure, going through and making sure that the roots don't infiltrate the pipes and create leakage to allow water to intrude. It's called INI. Eliminate infiltration and inflow INI or stormwater into the sewer system. And one of the things that's happened throughout the city is, understand this, is that while we have a separate storm drain and sewer system, there have been cases where roof outlets and other things actually are connected to our sewer assembly system thereby creating so much water that it creates a sewer overflow. So one of the charges that we have to go through with the consent decrees ensure that we can stop those connections and kind of airtight our sewer system. Developing a two-year sanitary sewer master plan, a project for short and long-term planning. We're certainly in the process of doing that. Inspect private sewer lateral constructions from permitting jobs, making sure that they're tied in properly to the sewer system, and maintain sewer network digital infrastructure for GIS information. And so that means we're going through, and we're actually doing CCTV various sewer lines throughout the city. Next slide. Watershed and stormwater. Eliminate multifaceted compliance with city's MPDES, which is the National Pollution Discharge and Limitation System. And so it's really, you have to understand, we've got some really great maps that show how our natural creeks actually help with our drainage throughout the city. So this project really is managing our natural creeks and also working with our man-made outlets and how water flows throughout the city. Delivery creek restoration, trash capture, and storm drain rehabilitation. We're developing new storm drain master plan to identify and prioritize project support funding initiatives for currently unfunded stormwater capital plans. So our entire elaborate storm drain system actually has very little funding to keep it in order. As I mentioned earlier, some of our systems are more than fifty years old in terms of our storm drain systems. And then when you hear things like climate change, understand that that's really real. When we get things like a cyclone bomb that we just had recently, or an Asmec River, we're getting so much water into our system. And in some cases, our system isn't designed to be able to handle that much capacity. And so we have to make sure that we are able to improve our system in certain areas. So we're constantly looking at that. We have assets of four hundred and two miles of pipe ranging from six inches to ninety-eight in diameter, fifteen hundred structures. We have trash captures such as electromagnetic faults and inlet screens, and over sixty miles of open creek as part of our storm drain system. Next slide. Looking back and looking ahead. So we have the infrastructure bonds, completing delivery of Measure KK and implementing Measure U. And I talked about that earlier. So it's a great thing that the citizens of Oakland pass Measure U, allows us to be able to take those projects that were designed and ready to go for, and under Measure KK funding, and we're able to move those projects forward. We're also implementing Measure Two for park maintenance. We're constantly, we're working with OPYRD and also with a Park and Recreation Advisory Committee or PRACT to ensure that we're meeting the requirements of Measure Two in terms of looking at our park system, looking at it from an equity standpoint, identifying categories of parks, identifying ways to bring parks to an equitable level. Some parks might need more, some categories of parks might need more money. We're looking at trying to work with the PRACT to be able to provide that recommendation for our annual budgeting process. We're managing illegal dumping with improved waste resources, enforcement, and cameras, community cleanup. And so, you know, one of the things about illegal dumping, we started out years ago before I got here. We talked about education, enforcement, and eradication. So we have some robust education, and our eradication method was, it goes down, we pick it up. It goes down, we pick it up. So we have this cycle where people put it out there and we pick it up. And now we're to the point with additional resources from the council, like the environmental enforcement officers. I note that there used to be something called the LEOs, and they were enforcement officers. And that program ended in two thousand and eleven. And the council, as of two years ago, brought back the environmental enforcement officers, and they are the enforcement arm. In addition to that, last year, we were able to get funding for, the council provided funding for our camera program. And so we almost have a year's worth of data. We'll be going to the Privacy Committee to give them an update on what we found to be helpful on some of our challenges in terms of being able to utilize the camera system in order to help us catch illegal dumpers. And there is a separate report for today for the council on illegal dumping. So we'll get into more of those details. Also, we have the Urban Forest Master Plan that should be coming to the council sometime in the fall. And this really is the city's way of saying, look, we've identified our urban canopy, and you can't replace the value of this canopy in terms of the maturity of the trees. It is unreplaceable. And one of the things we want to do, we want to be able to come up with a maintenance plan to ensure that we can protect and preserve this wonderful landscape of a master forest plan that we have. We also want to sustain the progress to improve our sewer system. We're coming forward with some programs there. As I said before, we're under the federal consent decree, and we have met our first check-in, and we got significant ratings in terms of how we're doing, we're meeting all those goals and objectives. We're also looking to really do more in terms of race and equity in staff training. And so one of the important components of race and equity is that inclusionary component. We can bring a number of different types of people from various backgrounds and organizations, but unless they're able to feel free and be able to express themselves, and we understand how to communicate, so we don't offend individuals, we're not there yet. So we're hoping... So we're hoping, along with the Department of Race Equity, that we can ensure that, that flows throughout our department over, over the number of years. Our capital improvement prioritization process as a council is where we have a process where we, we engage the community and we come back with, with the council and we look at, uh, the prioritization process in terms of how capital improvement projects are, um, delivered. I anticipate providing the council with an update in the next, uh, four weeks in terms of the capital projects that we have on board and ready to go, um, uh, from the Public Works Department, and, but it's actually, while we're managing it, it's, it's, it's the capital improvement programs for the entire city. And then we have the local business empowerment through contracting. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we're trying to do is ensure that one that we provide access, and one of the things we're working with, um, I T D, uh, are, 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 um, I T D Department is on making sure that we update our webpage to ensure that all the information is available for, for contracts, that everyone has access without having to sign up for, for service. Uh, so we're, we're, have to working with that and working with other, other groups to make sure that we can try to increase that, the number of small and local bit minority businesses to be involved. And as I mentioned earlier, and I know this is the story for, and you've heard repeatedly about recruitment. My number one concern on recruitment is that we have some critical areas that, that if it becomes an issue, it's too late. We have our sewer maintenance workers, give an example, this last storm, that, that department has fifty-five sewer maintenance employee, employees budgeted. We're currently at twenty-two employees. During this last storm event, w- we had to utilize those twenty-two employees twenty-four hours a day. We had gotten to the point, we were going to do mandatory requirement, because in this particular category, sewer maintenance workers, we can't pull public works maintenance workers into this particular area. We did that in other areas, but on sewer maintenance, it's critical. We cannot get to the point where we cannot, uh, prevent and stop existing sewer spills. And the next area of major importance again is our fleet maintenance, heavy mechanics and mechanics. We have to recognize that we're in competition with other public agencies and also the private sector. We've got to be able to find a way, because these are great city jobs. We just have to be able to find a way to be able to say, hey, John, we have this job. It's not going to take you eight, seven, eight months to hear about whether you're successful or not. When you do recruitment and it takes that long, you lose the cream of the crop. And what you're left with, you, you may not really want to be able to, to fit your overall goals and objectives. So just critical in terms of recruitment, those are the areas that are, that are in my performance plan, that I work with, uh, with Administrator Betsy Lake on, is that these are critical areas that I have to focus in on. Next slide. So who to contact, um, uh, I would say this, um, the document that you have is just a valuable document. As a former city manager, I would tell my council members, there are some packets that you should keep, because they have very valuable information in the documents, the twenty-twenty-three document, and these PowerPoints are not only educational for the council and the citizens, but also for administrators that are, that are currently working. It's a volume of information. And so, um, who to contact for questions regarding the content of this presentation? You can contact O P W Assistant to the Director Sean Maher at, uh, S, you know, there's Sean's email address. Everybody knows Sean, Sean's very, very responsive. So with that, uh, Council President Bass, I'm available for any questions.